Okay. We're here meeting of the City Council, Needles Public Utility Authority, City of Needles, will come to order. Executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, we council met in closed session. Item A was public and play discipline dismissal release pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. Item B was conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point ninety one. City of Needles versus Manassian. And there was no reportable action taken in closed session on that item. Item C was conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point ninety four. One potential case adverse to Otana Planet Green, otherwise known as OPG. And there was reportable action taken on that item. That item involved a dispute with OPG regarding some pass to cannabis taxes. There was a motion to approve a settlement agreement under which OPG will pay the city back taxes owed totaling forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and I think thirty-something cents. I can't quite see from my writing, but the motion was made by council member Campbell. The second was by council member Merritt. And the vote was as follows. Council member or Vice Mayor Merritt, yes. Council member Belt, yes. Council member Campbell, yes. Council member Long, Longbreak, no. Council member Pogue, yes. And council member McCorkle, yes. And so the motion passed approving the settlement agreement. The next item was item D, and that was a meeting of the NPUA and council. And it was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point ninety-two, three, and/or four regarding potential litigation with medical investor Higgin's LLC, MCA Management, three two four seven AM LLC, and two one zero three D LLC related to cannabis taxes. And the closed session related to a settlement agreement and a promissory note. There's no reportable action at this time. We don't have a signed settlement. We're hopeful to have that settlement accomplished and signed by the opposing side soon. That settlement would call for, once signed by the other side, it called, it would call for one million eight hundred and one thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars to paid, be paid to the city over a period of payments. And that would be reimbursing the city for the past due cannabis taxes. It would reimburse the city all its legal fees, all its staff time. It would also reimburse the city for interest. And then there's some penalties also that are included in that amount. And so if that settlement gets approved and signed by the other side and then signed by the city, then it would be a public record at that point. But at this time, given that we don't have a signed settlement agreement, there's nothing to report out.
Thank you.
And that concludes the report out in closed session.
Thank you. Your call was previously taken. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. In location. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. We thank you for our city, for our elected officials, for the trust bestowed upon us, for the businesses, the churches, the families, the individuals, our visitors, and our surrounding communities that all make our City of Needles the great destination that it is. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Approval of agenda, city manager.
Madam Mayor, we'd like to rearrange some items on the agenda based on the attendance here tonight. I'd like to pull item three on the NPUA. It will be back to you at your next meeting. And then I would recommend to the council that we move item number eighteen after item number one, so we can hear from those that are here and send another way.
Thank you.
I mean, why you to say?
Conflict of interest. Do we have any conflict? We have a conflict of interest. Do we have any here?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was approval of agenda. We should have.
Okay. I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
With the change.
I'll change it.
Right.
With the change.
Council member Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Pogue.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Longbreak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Conflict of interest.
I believe the city attorney mentioned the conflict of interest on the executive session.
Okay. Correspondents?
No, your honor.
All right. Introductions. I'd like to welcome Larry Ford, past council, and also Sean Goodmanson. City Attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, supporting of the rules or procedure adopted by the council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. Public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. And just a reminder that the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comments. So if the public has comments, they have three minutes. It's not a back and forth, a Q and A. It's just the public gets an opportunity to make their comments. And the reason for that rule is to make sure that when we have a large group like tonight, that everybody gets a chance to speak.
Thank you. Presentation, ten-minute time limit per person presentation has been established per municipal code section two dash eighteen. Update on the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is not so much of it as a, the Visitor Center itself, but we also wanted to kind of take some time and kind of let the city know what's going on in her chamber, because we've had a lot that's happening now, and we're continuing to move forward. We're very excited about it. We've now been doing our chamber breakfast for the last year, and it's been quite successful. This year, we've already started with some positive. We started with Don Rouse last month. This month, Lieutenant Gaughan will be speaking from the sheriff's office. Next month, we're actually going to have the district attorney, Jason Anderson, come and join us. We have several more coming out. We're pretty much so booked all the way out from May right now for breakfast speakers. So we're real excited about that. You know, we're lucky, our lucky green tournament, if you haven't had a chance to sign up, Kurt Bell. Yeah, if you're a golfer, sign up. Me, I don't understand the game. Minute sphere, inadequate stick, inaccessible hole to relax. What is it? Anyway, we move forward.
It's true.
It looks like it's going to be a good year. Looks like we're going to see a better outcome than last year. So we're real excited about that. Run for the wall right now. We've been kind of letting that run a little bit slow right now while we're focusing on the, the tournament. But after the tournament, I'll be kind of kicking that into top speed. We want to thank the city for the support that you're giving the chamber for the, the run for the wall, you know, the, the services that you're providing for us. We want to thank you personally. We appreciate your, your continued support of the chamber. Another big event that's coming out is a new business that's going to be here in town. First Institute, they've actually been here, they're part of the chamber, but they're actually moving into their own building. And they're doing a ribbon cutting on the twenty-ninth of this month. They're actually taking over the building there in front of the, the post office, three oh five D Street. So we're real excited that they're actually going to have a local office. And they're going to be working with us even more. We've been seeing a lot of positive coming through. We had somebody from their office train with us for a hundred and five hours. And, you know, I know we're, I've talked to several other businesses that have actually been using the First Institutes. And it's a very positive thing to help our, our youth grow stronger. The chamber website has been up and running now for the last probably about six months, and it's again also becoming stronger. We now have a section in there for small business training modules that are there for people to read and study on finances and items and budget, you know, like that to help out in our news feeds for local small businesses. We are opening up our next virtual store there at the chamber for Easter. So if you're going to order Easter candy, you can do it, supporting the chamber as well as getting nice Easter candy for everybody. We're starting to work, starting to reach out to the school. I was talking with them here this last week, and we're going to start working with one of their programs called Interact. We're reaching out to them to kind of start sparking the next generation of Chamber of Commerce members. So we don't know yet what that's going to look like, but it is moving forward. We're seeing a lot of growth. We're seeing on the average about three new businesses a month coming into the chamber right now. So that's very exciting. And it's not just members that are coming in from the other side, but it's people that actually are from Needles as well. That's always great to see. I had a thirty-minute Zoom call with Senator Padilla's office, and I'm real excited to announce that he is working on getting into the state budget of twenty-five. Sorry about that. They are trying to get into the state budget, a twenty thousand dollar. But money basically for the chamber to work with our businesses as well as continue to strengthen the, the Trailblazer signs for that program. So we're looking more and more to be able to have a lot of that come from the state and not have to put such a burden on the small businesses here in the city. I think you all know that Don Row has already granted us eighty-seven hundred dollars to get the initial start of the Trailblazer signs. So by the end of next month, we project to have the first phase, which would be all of the signposts repainted and back together, and the, the toppers to be redone so that we can actually refinish those and make it look more inviting for the businesses to come into town, but also to invite our tourists. And if those look ratty, people are going to have second thoughts about stopping to see us. But with them being refinished and refurbished and brought back to life, that's going to bring a lot of life back, and interest back into the city. It was one of those things, somebody made the comment to me tonight that, you know, we shouldn't be looking at Needles as in the middle of nowhere, because quite frankly, we're in the middle of everywhere. And I would love to see us figure out a nice little campaign for that to help draw in the tourism, because we are literally in the middle of everywhere. And I think that's something we need to start capitalizing on, not just as a chamber, but as a city altogether. And that's what I have to say. You have anything you want to, Eric? And then, do you have questions?
Thank you. Can we get an update on the Visitor Center? That was like the numbers and things like that.
I didn't put that together, because this is like month two of the quarter.
Okay.
But we are seeing on a regular basis, I know our, our visits are up, phone calls are still staying the same, but the visitors are actually coming in and spending more time there. And our, our actual, the souvenirs that work are actually starting to move. We're seeing some, I've seen, I want to say this month already, at least a hundred and twenty dollars worth of souvenirs already gone out. But like I said, this was the month two of the three, so. But it is moving in the right direction, very happy to say that. Very good for that. Anybody else?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I'd like to make sure that by the next month, we try to get a Visitor Center meeting set up. I've asked a couple of times so we can get that, so we can meet with you guys and go over all these things.
I'm there.
Perfect.
Monday am. We even got coffee.
You have coffee?
It's chicken.
Could be. I know I got friends vanilla. But that's what I had to talk tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look at parents.
Yes. We're going to do it for, on the pool, because most of them are here for that. And then I'll go back and pick it up.
Okay.
Should I do it?
Yeah, yeah, because, just to be clear, for the people attending, this is for people that want to speak on items that are not on the agenda. So the people that are here to speak on the pool, they'll speak in a moment.
Okay.
Public appearance, persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than the scheduled or requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name, address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. An instance to the California Government Code section five four nine five oh prohibits the city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda.
Anybody have anything? Jared?
City Council, Jared Johnson, thirteen twenty, Santa Fe Circle. Good to see you. Hope you're doing good.
Thanks.
Shank Lamentay from the cemetery up to the top of the hill. There's an old cut that runs through there that was either a gas line or a water line. And that cut is developing some fairly large pop holes after the weather has come through there. As we travel that road a lot, several vehicles are choosing to drive down the center of the road instead of going into the dirt to avoid them. So it should probably be looked at. There's about four or five that are decent sized. And they, we're jumping out in front of the bigger vehicles today. That's kind of a, kind of daring. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jay Galt from your friendly local neighborhood sheriff's office.
Yes.
You speak with a mic, sir? Sorry.
It was moved.
Jake Galt from your sheriff's office down the street. I just have a letter I want to read to you guys, and appreciate this letter from our office. On behalf of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, Needles Police, we wish to recognize the City of Needles, Cheryl Solis and Paulette Green for their involvement with the Senior Gift Tree Program during the Christmas season. Cheryl and Paulette's excitement and assistance were vital and helped brighten the lives of so many of our elderly population. Many senior citizens in Needles often go without this time of year. By hosting the Senior Gift Tree near lobby, the city provided a place for the public to assist our senior community members. This kindness was a blessing for so many, and we look forward to making this an annual event. Thank you so much, and please let Cheryl and Paulette know how much their time and participation were appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your video brought tears to my eyes. I loved it. Really cool. Okay. Okay, moving on. Okay, we'll go to number eighteen. Authorized from the regular council items, authorized repairs to the Needles Aquatic Center not to exceed five thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars to be funded by the general fund reserves. City Manager Report.
Yeah, just briefly, in July twenty twenty-three, staff conducted an aquatic center audit. At that point in time, we went out and identified the deficiencies that were found at the aquatic center, the pool specifically. There was an estimated cost of recommendations about a five million dollar fix to basically improve the entire pool itself. At that point in time, city council provided direction to staff that we would utilize that audit to be able to go out and determine potential funding opportunities. And so at that point in time, that's the direction we've taken. Really has reached out to OPR to find a funding opportunity through the Extreme Heat Community Resilience Program. And at that point in time, the argument applied. But again, these are, these are minimal, a five-point-five million dollar budget is half of the city budget, just to kind of put that in perspective. And then, so at that point in time, we're going to have to go through the process like we did with the general plan, where we take pieces and pieces at a time, where we get a hundred here, four hundred there, five hundred there. And so with, working with the mayor, this is really the, the mayor's staff report. So I'm, I'm kind of prefacing it how we got here. And so now I turn it over to the mayor, basically to outline what we've identified as staff. And our, our recommendation at the staff level is fifty-nine hundred and thirty-three dollars to help make the fixes that are, that are necessary. It was brought to our attention, and I, I left it off the staff report, basically that there's, there's additional equipment that's needed as well to be able to assist with the, the pool, basically the cleaning of the pool. And again, you always want to put a, there is a five percent contingency in there, but you got to remember this pool's almost fifty years old, if not, if not more than fifty years old. So that's what, is what we're trying to do is fix it so that we could get to the point where we find that grant funding to be able to do the, the major fix. Obviously, our first major fix is the replaster of the pool. If we were to top game plan, that's our game plan to be able to get roughly five hundred thousand dollars to replaster that pool. We have to go down to the gynae, allude what that meant just recently. So, but, but basically, it's, it's a heavy lift, and we want to ensure that we're able to provide these amenities to our residents, because, you know, there, there are very few places for our kids to go and enjoy. And so we want to make sure that we're good partners in working with them. So that being said, I won't take up too much of the sound before, but go ahead, Mrs. May.
On Thursday, I met with Jessie and Rainey and Kanan over at the pool, and I had them take me around, show me everything that's been done. This week, we're starting on, last week, the slide and the pool were fixed up, so we can get another year to two years out of that. And then, just recently, in the last couple of days, the splash pad is done. That is current. And after walking around with them, I asked them about the cleaning of the pool maintenance, because that does involve productivity of our city workers, and the vacuum is out. So I'm asking that we increase from the fifty-nine hundred up to fifteen thousand to allow also a brand-new vacuum that's fifty-five hundred dollars. So, and we do want the pool, you know, ready for our citizens, our youth, to be able to enjoy through the summer. And I think these improvements that we're making will definitely help that. So, and public comment.
I've got my posse behind me, so. First off, I want to thank council member Tana Belt, Patrick, Ellen, and Rainey, who have supported the pool, the swim team, and we really appreciate you guys trying to get this undergo and underway. But if you can tell, I have a few of my swimmers, not even a quarter of them, behind me. They have softball tryouts tonight, whatnot, all these busy kids. But I am a head coach at the Needles Swim Team. And first, I would really like to thank all of you guys for putting the Needles Aquatic Center on the agenda tonight. I asked to be placed on this agenda because I was informed that the pool would not be filled this year. However, we, with the recent updates, I am told the pool will be band-aided and filled, and we really appreciate that effort. But for decades, the pool has been neglected, like Patrick said, and after spending thirty years with this incredible swim team, I have witnessed the facility really falling apart, being there every single day. And in twenty nineteen, I was asked to list repairs and improvements needed to keep our facility running. And with little improvements since then, and what feels like broken promises, but I do appreciate you guys coming in and hopefully fixing these improvements. But above all, let's just reaffirm our commitment to each other and the shared spaces that bind us as a community, and let us not allow our pool to become a casualty of neglect, but rather a beacon of resilience and pride for generations to come. And together, we can revive our pool as a place to swim and a symbol of our collective strength and determination. And let us not wait for tomorrow, but act today. And for the sake of our community, and my swimmers, and all who call the pool their home, because some of these kids, they live at that pool. So, and I have all faith in the world that Kane and Parrot will pour his heart and soul, and soul into that pool, and he is such an asset to this, to this city. Actually, when I met with the Bullhead Rec Director last week for our Plan B, just in case this pool was not filled, they're like our brother, our rival, but yet are still our swim family up there, they were going to allow us to practice at their facility. And so I needed to meet with the Bullhead Rec Department and city to make sure that our insurance would be okay at their facility. And Dave, the director up there, said that Kanan would be very missed at their facility so that we are, that he assured us that Kanan will be amazing here. So I just want to, I just want to say thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you very much for, for putting this on our, on the agenda tonight. I do know that a couple of my swimmers do want to speak tonight, if that's okay. So, but I am going to be up here with them so they don't feel as nervous as I do right now. They'll be nervous. He's going to do the wolves first.
My name is River Lee. My name is River Lee, and I'm here to address the Needles Pool. Ladies and gentlemen, parents, and fellow swimmers, I stand before you today as a proud member of our community and an enthusiastic precipitant in our beloved swim team. As, as we gather here today, I want to share with you why the community pool means so much to me and to all of us who are part of this incredible swim team. First and foremost, the community pool is not just a place where we swim, it's a place where we come together as a community, where friendships are forged, and where dreams are nurtured. Every stroke we take, every laugh we swim, is not just about competition, but about camaraderie, camaraderie, and teamwork. For me, the community pool is like a second home. It's where I've spent countless hours practicing, honing my skills, and pushing my limits. It's where I've learned the value of discipline, perseverance, and dedication. But more importantly, it's where I've made lifelong friends and shared countless memories that I will cherish forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our swim team is more than just a group of individuals swimming together. We are a family. We support each other through the highs and lows, celebrating victories and lifting each other up during setbacks. And the community pool is the heart of our family, providing us with space to come together to train, to compete, and to grow both as athletes and individuals. But the importance of the community pool goes beyond just our swim team. It serves as the core of our entire community, a place where people of all ages and backgrounds come together to stay active, to socialize, and to enjoy the benefits of a healthy lifestyle. Whether it's swimming lessons for children, water, aerobics for seniors, or recreational swimming for families, the pool plays a virtual role in promoting health and wellness for everyone in our community. However, the family of a community pool is not guaranteed. It requires our collective support and commitment to ensure that it remains a vibrant and thriving space for generations to come. From maintaining grading to promoting and accessibility, we must work together to preserve and enhance our community pool for the benefit of all. So let us continue to cherish and celebrate our community pool, not just a place to swim, but as a symbol of unity, resilience, and the community spirit. Together, let us dive into the future with enthusiasm, enthusiasm and determination. Many in our community pool will always be there to inspire and uplift us both in and out of the water.
Thank you.
Many, many other community pool will always be there to inspire and uplift us both in and out of the water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can do it. Swim team teaches you.
You know, I think it's your phone, you never know.
Hey, Dallas, see you guys.
Yeah.
You can do it.
You do swimarama, don't you? You ask for money?
She's sneaky. You have three minutes, so you're good.
That's a good one. She wants to swim in the pool.
All right.
She just started last year, huh?
Nice.
Yep. She's a pretty good breast stoker, huh? How old were you when you started? How old were you when you started swim team? How old were you? Four years old?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, council comment. Uh, thank you so much for coming up here. It's wonderful, and I, um, I go back to when this, when the swimming pool was at the high school. You have one more person that wants to talk? Go right here, your public comment first. Oh, sorry.
Derek Johnson, thirteen twenty, Santa Fe Circle. Um, I spoke with, uh, Kanan, Kanan over there, eh, for a long time. He seems to know a lot about what he's doing, but he's also one person. Uh, one thing we did talk about was trying to reach out to our community partners, such as, uh, aquatic pools, barren pools, and our other providers that do cleaning and uh, repairs and installations. They know all about this, too. Uh, talking to them about helping in doing this in return for putting a logo or some kind of advertisement on the bottom of the pool. Havasu has tournaments, we have tournaments, Bullhead, everybody comes in and out of all these different pools, everybody's gonna see their logos. If they were to be approached with that, to say, hey, we got a lot of heads, a lot of people that swim here, a lot of people see your ad. We already know you're in the community, this is what you specialize in. If they would like to come out and either assist with the plastering, assist with the supplies, assist with getting us a discount on a filter system, or the, whatever equipment we need. Um, if we approach them and ask them about that, um, the city would have a charitable donation thing that they could write off, and also get their logo on the bottom of the pool, or their advertisements around the pool, and assistance to help them with that. Like it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brad Harris, um, born and raised here, we know the grace on swim team. But, uh, not here to talk about the pool from the swim team perspective, that's been done. I just want to remind everyone that there are children in this community that don't have any parents or anybody that can take them to the river, supervise them. The pool's a big thing for them. They're watched, they're safe, and they could have something to do in the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comment? If not, public comments are closed. Council comment?
Thank, thank you for bringing that up. Um, my involvement with swim team started when we were still at the high school. We didn't even have the swimming pool yet. And my children went to the river in nineteen eighty-eight, and my daughter Shawna was swept into the river on the stream. And she started swimming lessons with Leonard Owensby on Monday. Uh, Sheila started when she was three, and spent her first state competition at, um, at, uh, three, she was three and a half years old at USC against eight-year-olds. They didn't even have little ones then. We swam against eight-year-olds, and that was scary. But my kids grew up, and I coached for a long time. I was coaching when Ashley was competing, and when Brad was competing, I taught the little ones their strokes. So it is an important part of our community. We do live on a river. Children need to learn how to swim. Uh, we, you know, we had a coach that just passed away this year, Diane's, I think she taught everyone to swim that's older than thirty-two years old. Uh, learned to swim, um, underneath her tunnel edge, and saved a lot of lives, which, I know that my son is pulling people out of the river. And there's, I mean, our boys grew up to be, look at the shoulders, you know, these boys, these boys are swimmers. And, and teaches other skills to be involved in, as, when they're going to the pool, and they're enticed, and there's scholarships for swim team. We try and get all the kids on our community on swim team. And these children grow up to be public speakers, they go out there, they solicit, solicit donations when they're little tiny guys. Going in and talking to groups, and they learn leadership skills, they learn sportsmanship, they learn so many things. And the swim team is a family. I mean, it's a family that's incredible, it's unbelievable. And, um, most of the children in our community get that experience, so the pool is really, really important. And as was said before, you know, it's like, if we had all the money, we'd fix it, but five point five million dollars is what it's going to take to put that pool back where it belongs. And that's not with any new bells or whistles. That's just taking it and, and bringing it up to state standards, and there's, there's all kinds of like really tricky things with how much we can do before we're required to do things we can't afford. So, uh, we're doing everything that we can at this end, and, um, and I'm glad that you realize that the the vacuum needed to be, uh, needed to be fixed. Um, so we're going to continue to, to do everything we can to bring this service. And another thing people don't realize is that the swimming pool isn't open all the time. We only have a small period of time, because there's, there's so many hours a day, you have to have three people on deck, minimum three people on deck all day long when that pool is open, at minimum wage, and the pool just doesn't make that money. And the city doesn't have the money either. So for people who don't understand why the pool isn't open after a certain time when it's still hot, it, it's, again, it's a money thing, unless we raise the cost of everything and make it prohibitable. So it's, that's not a possibility either. So hopefully in the future, as we grow, we'll get to have changes like that, but um, I like to, I personally am really happy that we're able to do this much, this far. I know it might be disappointing that that's all we can do, but we are doing everything we possibly can at this moment. And, and we'll do whatever we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. I just want to thank you guys for coming out. I mean, this is nice to see everybody come and support something that we're, we try hard for. I mean, we forget sometimes that we're up here and we may try to make decisions to keep our city solvent, so we're, you know, working to pay our bills, stay on top of it, and have a little extra money so we can do these things, because it's recreation, those are not necessarily top priorities for the city, but then you realize, this is why we do it, for all the people here. So I appreciate you guys coming out, for talking. I mean, it gets a little scary, but your words speak volumes, so thank you for coming out. These guys spend the night there, they do a swimarama, they spend twenty-four hours at that pool. God bless them.
That is best parties.
Swimming for twenty-four hours. I mean, this is why we do what we do. Thanks, guys, for coming out.
Thanks. Oh, she went.
You know, I just want to go ahead and thank the youth for coming out and talking. I know it's not easy, but when you guys come out and you're able to express your voice on something that you truly love doing and are passionate about, it really does catch the attention of adults. So, um, just so you know that we are going to continue to do whatever we can to make sure that pool is open and safe. Um, but that is for you guys, not the adults. That's for you guys. So thank you for coming out.
Just briefly, if you hear that the pool's gonna shut down, come talk to me, please, because I'm in, I'm the one that makes that decision, so there's, there's, so I'd, I'd appreciate it. If you came out, we had a better relationship with all you guys. Obviously, we want to make sure that uh, we, we provide these amenities to our residents, but I'm, I'm the one that makes that decision, so please, come talk to me, that'd be helpful so that we can build a relationship and uh, you know, this is our pool. And so it'd be, it'll be good to have us all together and working together, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll for the motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize repairs to the Needles Aquatics that are not to exceed fifteen thousand to be funded by general fund reserves.
I'll second it.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Um, council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one more thing, we start tomorrow working on this, so by the way, so. That's why, this is something that's gonna take a couple of weeks, we've already got it in the works, so thank you all.
MPU A Council Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor and any member of the MPU A City Council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to MPU A Council action, a member of the public may address the MPU A City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items two and four through six on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Item number three was pulled.
Okay.
End of MPU A Consent Calendar. During the in, the joint MPU A Council meeting, and reconvene the council meeting.
I make a motion to approve, um, consent, uh, two, and then four through six.
I second.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Jernigan?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
Yes.
Thank you.
Public comments pertaining to the council items, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. Council Consent Calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor and any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items seven through ten on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
I have moved to approve items seven through nine. Not seven, it's, it's
Seven through nine.
Seven through nine.
I'll second.
Seven through ten.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Is that wrong?
It's seventy ten.
Well, if you're, if you're wishing to have a discussion about ten, it's
May I amend my motion, please, for, to include items seven through ten? I apologize.
A second. Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
Yes. Mayor, did we skip item three?
It was pulled, too.
Oh, it's, okay, got it. I was thinking it was pulled for discussion, but
No, it was, uh, it was pulled, it's gonna be brought back to the next meeting. Okay. End of Council Consent Calendar. Regular council items. Award to twenty twenty-four Edible Food Recovery Grant. S- city, Rainey's report.
To council. Um, this edible food recovery grant was on your last agenda. I'm just gonna highlight, again, I'm not gonna ask the applicants to come up this time because council's heard other proposals and they're in your packet. Uh, this is the third year that the city has received, uh, funds from the Mojave Desert, uh, Joint Cowards Authority, as we are part of their um, co-op, um, to help us with our cow recycle, um, regulations and coming to compliance. Uh, they provide this five thousand dollars to help us with our local edible food recovery. I really want to highlight that this is our local edible food recovery. It has nothing to do with, with food that comes outside of the city. We have to report to Cow Recycle what we are doing here, Needles. That's with wagon wheel, the restaurants, uh, any fast food, that if they have extra food, that they know where and who they can call that will come and collect that resource, that it's diverted from the landfill. So these funds, um, for some council members that weren't here last meeting, we, um, issued a proposal to three, to our three largest, uh, food recovery, uh, organizations in town, so that Set Free, uh, Firehouse and St. Vincent de Paul. Um, in your packet tonight, they've presented a proposal on what they would do with the funds. It's, it's intended to help fund their operations, gas, fuel, electric costs of refrigeration. Um, again, this is for them to support local edible food recovery, and we really want to see them, you know, trying to collect edible food uh, from our local organizations and, uh, doing some record keeping. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have. We can ask applicants to come up if you have any questions, um, per their proposal. But you can elect tonight to select one, two, three, to distribute the funds equally, um, it's kind of a discretion.
Yeah. Rainey, how much was she funds again?
Five thousand.
I, uh, last week I spoke, because these are all necessary um, contributors to helping feed our citizens here in Needles. And, and reading through their proposals, they are equally involved in trying the recycling of that, of the food. I would really like the amount to be split evenly between the three groups.
Okay. Any council? Motion or?
I move to split it through, between three groups equally.
I second.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
No.
Merritt?
Yes.
Uh, Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
No. So that's four.
Yeah.
We have four in favor, so the motion passes.
Okay, Wade, you're reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, naming the new walking trail at the Jack Smith Park to Marilyn Hostet Matthew's Trail. Staff report?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we're just related. I, I did tell you last time this had gone consent, but based on being a resolution, we are gonna name the walking trail uh, after, uh, Ms. Marilyn Hostet Matthews. We're very thrilled, so we, we really already talked about this last time around, this is just to go through the process and actually name it, uh, the walking trail after her. So we're related to do so.
Thank you. Um, call, um, call for the motion. I move to approve, but we um, the resolution naming the new walking trail at Jack Smith Park to Marilyn Hostet Matthew, make it the Marilyn Hostet Matthews Trail.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Long break?
Yes.
Thank you.
I walked on that tonight. I went unwalking before I came here.
Great.
It was really nice to walk around, walk down several lines.
Okay. Authorized those interested to attend the League of California Cities City Leaders Summit in Sacramento April seventeenth through the nineteenth. I would like to attend, I've not, um, attended this, um, League of Cities Leaders Summit yet. I would like to attend that.
Anybody else?
I'd like to attend that one.
Do we have, uh, in the, uh, background, the materials, it lists who wanted to go?
Yes, uh, yes, Madam Mayor, yeah. Uh, real quick, so the League of Cities is taking, uh, uh, is taking place April seventeenth through nineteenth. Uh, Council Campbell, Council McCorkle have previously attended. Council members Poe and Campbell have expressed an interest in attending. Uh, the registration costs roughly six hundred and fifty dollars for, for the full conference, hotel accommodations, and, and whatnot, so general fund per DM would, would cover the estimated twenty-one hundred. And so what I need from you is authorization to, for the interested council members that would like to attend. Council member Poe and Campbell, and now the mayor have all expressed their interest in attending, and so
If Joanne's gonna go, I won't go. I'll, I'll withdraw.
Well, no, I'm not getting help. So basically, it's between you all, how you'd like to move forward with it. What I need from you is a recommendation to do so. So you all can talk and deliberate amongst yourselves, whoever wants to attend, and whatnot.
Make a motion who wants to.
I'm gonna go.
I've not gone yet. I have gone. I, I have gone too.
Who wants to go? Who wants to go?
I do. Joanne?
And Alan.
I do need to go. Okay, I will, I will want to go, but I won't guarantee I'm going. I want to go.
So we can have three of you.
Okay.
It's up to three or equal to attend. Uh, anything more than that's a quorum and it gets, it's sticky.
Do you make a motion to approve the mayor, uh, Ellen and Joanne to go to the League of Cities?
Okay. Second. I'll second it. And call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
No.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt? For three people to go, is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Long break?
Yes.
Authorized those interested to attend the twenty twenty-four City County Conference on May sixteenth through the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four in Lake Carrollhead. City manager report?
Yes, ma'am, the, the conference is an opportunity to network with other cities, uh, within our, with the, within our region. The SBCTA puts us on uh, Mayor Jernigan is a council member, and Councilman McCam- uh, Campbell have previously attended. Uh, Mayor Jernigan serves, uh, the city in Needles as, as Uh, Mayor Jernigan serves uh the city needles as SBCT representative. Council members Pogue and Campbell have expressed interest in attending. Uh, this is an event that sells out very quickly. And so what I need from you is authorization uh to select the council members that would like to attend.
I just wanna make a comment and it refers to kind of how I feel about all the travel things. I am not against who wants to go. I just think we should limit it to probably two for each. That's my personal opinion. Um, and I just wanted to put that out there. Like, I'm not against who goes. I just think we need to limit some of these because we're spending a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I agree. And uh, so I will um back out.
I don't, who wants to go to this? I'm on I'm on the SBCT.
So you. I want to go to that one.
Oh, okay. Um, call for the motion.
We have the the mayor and council member Campbell?
I'll move to approve Ellen and Jan to go.
I'll second that.
And call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Uh, Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Authorized those interested to attend the ICSC event at Las Vegas Convention Center on May nineteenth through the twenty first. Staff report.
Yes, ma'am. This is an opportunity for us to meet with retailer. We do this every year. We have been successful in years past and we get together with the the decision makers on who decides when retail goes in the country. When years passed, we've had uh council members Campbell, McCorkle, long break. Mayor Mayor uh Mayor Jernigan have previously attended. Council member Poe and Campbell have interested in attending. The registration deadline is coming up, so the estimated cost for the full conference is eight hundred and fifty dollars per council member. Uh, with with room and board approximately seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this would be part of the general fund budgeted item. Again, this is an opportunity for us to to get in front of the retailers and and lure into our city. Last time around, we did have five council members go, which made it quite challenging. I just wanna make that comment, but it's up to the the board how they would like to decide and who they wanna appoint to go.
I've gone every year since I've been on council. So, I mean, I I can go or not go, but I really don't want five people going again. I was very uncomfortable with that.
Well, I would like to go.
Okay.
I'd definitely like to go.
I don't wanna go.
I have to.
Um, call for the motion.
Let's do it.
Joey?
Councilman McCorkle and Longbreak?
Are you going, Joanne? Did you wanna go?
If there's space for me, I'll go. I would like to, yes. So um, may I ask you a question, Patrick? When you, when you said five, it was it was a little rough. What what would you say would be the optimal number of us to go? So we're not stepping over three, four, two?
Well, the Brown Act violations are a serious uh issue when you're meeting with developers. It's hard for one counselor not to wanna be a part of the conversation with the other three. And so anytime we go to a conference, it's it's quite chal- challenging when you're you've got more than three because you're you're getting the Brown Act because you really don't wanna violate the Brown Act.
Right, I understand that, yes.
It has to be part of the conversation. So less than, less than four is always ideal with the board of seven because you're not, you're not getting the majority as part of the group that's going.
Yeah. I I thought it might have been because people were stepping on, I don't know, stepping on toes or it was, you know, a little bit too busy or rough. But yes, I I do understand the Brown Act. So, so we've got three of us then?
Three interested.
Yeah.
Okay, council member McCorkle, long break and Pogue.
Can I just say one thing, too? I I think that these are good conferences, but I still think we need to go after big retail. I read big manufacturing. I mean, that's been my eight year plea. And so, I mean, if Starbucks wanted to be here, they'd be here. And so I get the fact that we go to promote these and we have got a few things, but they're gonna, I mean, yes, keep us on the menu. I'm a huge fan of going to all these, but big retail, we have to bring in a big business. I mean, we're, these are retails just going, getting smaller and smaller. So.
And they they are condensed.
A big business in here, retail's not coming.
Yep. We have a big empty space down. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Councilman Longbreak, McCorkle and Pogue to go to ICSC.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
No.
Holmes?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Authorized those interested to attend the Inland Empire Tourism Regional Summit Riverside at the Marriott Riverside Convention Center, thirty four hundred Market Street on Thursday, April eighteenth.
I'd rather go to that.
Um, staff report.
Yeah, briefly, there's this New Inland Empire Tourism Group that has put together, uh, the city council has previously written a letter of support for the group so that they can help attract retail uh to Don Row. Well, we wrote it, we we wrote a letter to supervise a row, but basically the intent was to help uh generate tourism uh in the Inland Empire, which constitute the city needles. So Mayor Jernigan and Councilmember Campbell previously attended last year. Mayor Jernigan received an invite and was registered for the event. And so at this point in time, I need uh folks to register, to to move forward, or if you think.
I I already registered, but um I'm gonna go to the League of Cities and I just wanted to say, too, um Freddie Byes is coming out July ninth to speak at the Chamber Quarter Bite that Needles um is hosting with all the the chambers in the area, Bullhead City, Parker, Kingman. So um, and Lake Havasu. So he will be here July ninth. So somebody can use my ticket.
Can I switch from going to Sacramento to this instead? Then I'll go away for three days. I'll just go to this one way. Okay. I would like to go to this one and I'm gonna.
You can use my ticket.
And then we'll talk about canceling me and don't register for the other one.
Okay, so you're not going to Sacramento?
Can't be in both places at the same time. So this is my birthday and I cannot go to Sacramento and Riverside on the same day. I haven't claimed myself yet, so.
Okay.
And I'd rather do the one day trip than the three day. I I don't know where I'm going with my health. It's best that I limit my out of town stuff for long periods.
Okay, motion.
Okay, so right now we have council member Campbell going.
Mm-hmm.
I could probably go for that one if we need two of us.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
And wonder.
Belt.
We'll drive up and drive back.
I make a motion for council member Belt and council member Campbell to go to that.
Second it.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Consider canceling the second regular city council MP UA HAC meetings in June, July and August um twenty twenty four. Um, city manager report.
Yes, it's uh annually, we we look at canceling the second meeting in at least three months in the summer so that the council members can get away, staff members can go on vacation, do sort those sorts of things. Last year, we did July, August and September. This year, we we wanna look at June, July and August, you know, the the true summer months. And so that way we can just um, and and September gets pretty busy for most part. So we'd like to uh move it up a month. And so instead of doing the in the September, we go into August. So our recommendation is to cancel the second meeting. Again, we will have meetings if they're necessary and we need them, we will all come together. But but it would be ideal to be able to provide a break to the staff and the family members so we can move forward.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, will that affect any of the budgetary things that are coming that happen towards the end of June adopting the um budget?
So we always aim at the beginning of of June, uh, if not, um, uh, in May, at least, let May, because we don't wanna get to June because it's already the last, you know, revision. We've already, so just, we've already signed on the agenda. We've already got together on that, so we're prepared to move that forward. So I wouldn't concern be too concerned about the budget, but thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we've already done on eighteen regarding Aquatic Center. City Matt, city attorney report.
Yes, just briefly, some of the items that we've been working on for the city including include representing the city in connection with the uh dispute with OPG and uh preparing the notice of uh revocation and then the uh settlement agreement that was uh reported out of closed session this evening. And then also working on a dispute with Wolf PAC regarding cannabis business taxes, unpaid cannabis business taxes. And then um recently, hopefully, hopefully, it's coming to a resolution. We represented the city in connection with a dispute with Rio Buena Vista. Uh, but hopefully that's on a good path now with the parties working and communicating with one another. And we worked with staff on that. Um, and then also representing the city in a dispute with MIH and related entities. As I reported out of closed session, we're working on a settlement. Resolution of that. And then also representing the city in connection with numerous code enforcement cases and receivership matters. We also assisted city staff with um Public Records Act requests, which sometimes can be quite um labor intensive to respond to them. Um, we also represent the city on public contracting matters. We provide assistance to staff on housing authority matters. Um, Brown Act issues, questions when they come up, conflict questions when they come up. And then representing the city in litigation, pending litigation adverse to manassese and seeking specific performance of contract uh related to the city's sale of a downtown property. And then advising the city um on employment law matters. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City manager.
Briefly, we had an auction uh for our uh public works department. You were able to, and you'll get these as part of, they're not in this packet, they'll be part of this last packet. But basically, we had twenty items that were sold, uh, basically items that the no longer used to the city. We were able to raise thirty one thousand dollars. It's basically decluttering our life. So I wanna thank uh public works, the insurance and and staff of getting together. There's a catalog of trucks and and you know, lifts, dump lifts, pallet jacks and Chevy vehicles that have a hundred and sixty six thousand miles on them. People bought these things as is, so I'm just very thankful that it's out of our yards. And so now it's in somebody else's yard. So in in the city clerk's office as well, we're putting this together. We're, it was a coordinated effort when we all came together and we raised some money. For, so that's what we did. Um, additionally, uh, storm preparation, even though it didn't come our way, we were prepared. Public Works uh was ready with sandbags. Uh, we were able to coordinate with the fire department to be able to ensure that our residents had access to sandbags. Some cities got up to twelve inches of rain. And so I, and I bet when I was at city managers conference last last week, I was just thankful that we didn't, we didn't have that same impact that the others did. But we were ready to be able to address it uh it needed. Park progress, I hope you got a chance to drive around the city, but there's seven million dollars with the park projects being done today right now. So if you go Bob Bell Beach Park, looks great. If you go over to the Duke Watkins, you'll see that the pump track, we can't keep keep kids off of it. But if you see that there's a brand new sidewalk and ADA ramp there, so go check it out when you have a chance. It's truly remarkable that the work's taking place. Uh, we were able to fix the rec center bathrooms earlier in the week, uh, end of last week. Basically, there was some old clay pipe that's deteriorated beyond its spike. So we were able to get our crews out there and take care of it and get it addressed. Pioneer Cemetery, there's a fence there now, but I know that that was an issue before. Um, it does keep people out of the uh out of the cemetery. And so it, we've got photos, again, you'll see this in my manager report this week. Streetlights, we've got some streetlights up. We've got the first city solar streetlight up in the city. Uh, we're we're looking at new, uh, and it came from France. Apparently, the directions were in French and so. I figured that one out. Uh, and so.
Speak French.
There's a, there's a boba shop over at the Shell Station. So if you're in a boba, the boba's pretty good. Go go take a look at it and uh get your your cup. Rainey says it's really great. So I take her word for it. Uh, also, there's some cannabis tours at the end of the week. I know you all got the email, so if you're interested, there's still room up on the tour, so you can go look at these cannabis facilities. And then um, that really, I wanna talk about um Rite Aid. Uh, we've, we have been keeping the public informed. We've got our third update. So as you all know, on January twenty third, the city was notified as along with the employees that Rite Aid is closing. Uh, greatly, the 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 Rite Aid company, because it's a rural community, was given two weeks to shut down. Other cities were given, or other Rite Aids of other cities were given twenty four hours. So we were able to really get together and, you know, with the the leadership of our team, our emergency services coordinator. Uh, we were really able to bring things together. And I just wanna thank the California Board of Pharmacy, Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, IEHP, California Department of Healthcare Services, San Marino County Behavioral Health, San Marino County of Aging Services, um, D-Flat Pharmacy, CVS, Safeway and Riverside Pharmacy. So basically, this is an example where private sector came together to help fill a need for the city of needles. And so government was able to come together and and create uh a synergy and really bring all the stakeholders together. But really, uh, needles had one Medi-Cal and Old Pharmacy. Now we've got five. And we got one that delivers. And so I just, I'm so thankful to our team that we that we were able to put this together and uh help serve our residents. I mean, this, like, I was telling the city managers at the conference, the sky was falling on January twenty third. I mean, it was, I mean, we people were calling us, they were crying. They didn't know how they were gonna get their their met their. And so that really resonated with us and our team to really help find a solution. Uh, IEHP is working on a pickup where they'll pick you up and take you to get your pharmacies. That's gonna be in our fourth update. Rainey's working on that one right now. We still have the shuttle services that will take you in to get your pharmaceutical needs into those pharmacies that were just mentioned, or the CVS, Safeway, and then D-Flat, you can get delivery. But again, uh, our our residents have access to their prescriptions and that was something that kept this all up at night. So I just wanna report out that we've, we've come a long way, but we're not there yet without a brick and mortar in our town. I'm still not sleeping at night, but this is good a step forward to get us there.
Thank you. Council member. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the city administration for your hard work um compiled with um IEHP, uh Medi-Cal, San Bernardino County for addressing um the crises with the pharmacy. It was huge. And um, and we do have, I mean, getting that last report that that the um D-Flat will actually deliver pharmaceuticals to needles is huge for our people who don't have transportation, elderly, deaf and disabled. Um, so that that was really wonderful. Also, um, I personally have taken advantage through my um my last month and being completely one hundred percent incapacitated and ordering food from Walmart. They get delivered to my house. And even though they're not supposed to, the lady came in my house and brought my groceries because I can like lift that thing of water. It's that this is a a new weight limit for me this week. So it was really nice. I went online, I ordered everything I needed. I ordered it at midnight and at two o'clock that afternoon, it was in my dining room and it was awesome. It's nine dollars and change to pull the order and I tipped the driver. And if you go in Walmart Plus, I think it's a fifty dollar a year and pardon, a hundred a year. And then it's uh, and then it it eliminates the cost of pulling your, pulling your order for you. So it offsets it. So it wo- works out, so it's a lot cheaper. So I was really grateful for that and I hope that eight people are able to take advantage. I mean, nine dollars to pull it and a tip is a lot for some people also, but uh it combined, maybe if people combined it or it worked it out that way, there's ways to do it. And that's one way that people can get things here until we eventually get a store that carries produce, um, fresh meat and things. Um, so that's really awesome that that our tri-state community is stepping up to help us to accommodate some things. And I'm very, very grateful for all of the people that are involved in that. And uh, and again, for the food banks that we have through the ministries, um, the 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 different entities that we have giving out food in our community is huge. So I, we have, we have things and pulled together in ways that I've not seen other communities do. And I'm really proud of all of us, what we have and grateful for all that we do and all that we have and everyone that participates. Thank you.
Okay, so um, the one that's not written down is I would like to address the chamber and um to thank you for what you're doing. Um, I have noticed over, I want to say maybe the last year and a half, a huge change with the chamber. Um, any entity, I wouldn't even say entity, it's not any of the city. So any group in the city of needles that is helping promote needles outside of the area is amazing. Um, I have seen how many people you have brought in, um, especially through your breakfasts, your emails. um, the website being up. It, if people have not been uh members of chambers or super active in them, they might not understand how uh viable it is to actual city's health and the health of a small business. So the progress that I have seen the chamber make is amazing, and thank you for that. Um, I also want to give a huge thanks out to um the small guys, well, of course, the big ones, but the small ones, Riverside Pharmacy and D-Flat. Um, as well as Billit trying to throw their hat in the ring for the pharmacies. Um, when this happened, um, speaking to some of them, they were a little cautious, but there is no way we're going to be able to get the approval or whatever we need as a small pharmacy to do this in any length of time. But thanks to Patrick and his crew, man, they pushed that through. Even the pharmacies, um, when I've talked to them, were super shocked on how that process happened. Um, they haven't seen that kind of work happen before. So I'm going to definitely thank everyone that was involved in that committee um to move mountains, miracles is what that was. Um, I would like to bring up the road to Jack Smith Park. It is awful. It's embarrassing. Um, it's definitely not ready for summer traffic. Uh, parts of that road is literally crumbling off on the side. I caught my tire again. Definitely paying attention, but there's one spot that keeps growing. Um, so it's pretty dangerous. If, you know, those boats have gotten bigger, we're charging for people to go to Jack Smith. We got the marina there. We got the golf course. You know, someone catches a tire on a trailer, that's an accident waiting to happen. Um, so I'd like to kind of maybe get that road looked at a little bit sooner than what it was scheduled for, maybe. Um, also, just kind of want to see if we can get an update on what's going on with the, I mean, not that it's just more nosy, but Home to Suites here, uh, they're having their grand opening in Havasu, so I'm just curious if that means that they're going to start working on this one anytime soon. Um, maybe an update on what's going on with the large building next to Needles Point. Uh, Riverlucks, too. Uh, where their progress is and seeing if they're able to maybe kind of clean that up a little bit from working on a sign that's been going on forever. Leaving out the sawhorses and everything just for months, kind of looks a little bad. Um, uh, let's see, I have people, oh, almost large group breathing down my neck about wanting to know what's going on with the, the trailheads for uh the U T V trails. So I'm, my last understanding was it's supposed to be a committee of different groups within Needles, so to maybe work on getting those people together, brainstorming into something. Mm, that's all I got. Sorry, I'm cold and freezing.
So Merritt. As everybody took my stuff, pretty much. I was going to mention the Walmart thing, and then I was also going to mention what Tana mentioned earlier. We really need to have the visitors that are um committee meeting. That'd be awesome to get on the schedule soon and um, and again, I wanted to reiterate, I really appreciate all of the council members that go to all of these things, and I think it's awesome. I just wanted to limit it a bit, so thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Pogue.
Uh, yes, I just have to reiterate the comments. Patrick, you, you got that uh uh pharmacy fiasco turned around in post haste, and that was a momentous task, and you got all the right players involved, and I just wanted to pat you on the back for that. And uh, other than that, I don't have anything. I'm worn.
Grace. Thank you.
Thank you guys again for your hard work for the pharmacies. I mean, definitely made that happen, and just uh happy Valentine.
Thank you. Councilmember Longbreak.
Uh, yeah, thanks, thanks again for the chamber commerce. That's awesome. And uh, yeah, that was, you said everything I need to say on that one. And uh, also, but before we get into another situation, the Center of Change is closed down. Uh, the Lono Club is going to close down, too. Uh, because the city's taking it over. Uh, it has no place to go yet. So that's our two mental health places in, in this uh city that needs mental health help. Uh, before we get into a crisis, they might, might want to look into that. Uh, I've been doing my best to try to find a building for them. I checked with the, the Billit Health uh, uh, place that they were going to build right there on Front Street, from the Santa Fe Park. That, that might be a place that they're interested in. Putting over there, another one, Firehouse Ministry has volunteered their spot over there, which thank you much for that. Uh, the hospital also is something we're looking into. Uh, but I think the city should do a little bit more because it's been there for a long time, and uh we should, we should at least try to find a place for them. And um and with that, I want to um mention another thing. I, I got a disturbing report about Elvis's, that somebody's letting uh a family in. A family with kids in Elvis's, and they say, oh, it's okay, we have permission to go in there. And they had a key to it. Um, that's, that's a, that's a major liability. The major liability is someone that we don't even know. It's not even a, a, a city member, you know, that's going in there. Uh, the place needs to be rekeyed, and the keys, keys need to be uh um dished out and not kept in, in people's possession. Because I heard that they're, they're going to put uh new key, new keys on it, laser cut, so nobody can duplicate them. There's a lot of keys out there. I think that should be done as soon as possible before we get into a liability situation where someone's going to get hurt on that property, and then we're going to be sued. Maybe lose the city, who knows? Thanks.
Again, I'd like to um thank city manager um Patrick and Rainey and the city team for all they did for Rite Aid. That was just so important for our community. And congratulations to the boys and girls um basketball teams as they travel to district finals in Nevada. We've got the number one girls' coach here, Adrian. And um, and also, we've got the resource fair coming March twentieth. Um, Steve Reyes, we've got the tax assessor mobile unit coming again, and then they've also, the health department will be bringing their mobile unit out, too. So it'll be a really nice um day for that. So we just need to encourage um really good attendance so we can keep that coming. If nothing else, the meeting's adjourned.
Oh, wait, one more to wait, one more.
Congratulations to the middle school, the girls' needle school um cheer team, bringing home number one from their cheer competition in Kingman.
Grace.
Patrick, can we get this to the, um, maybe we can bring this up on next agenda?
I just, I do that back, but we're going to squeeze.
We're here meeting of the city council Needles Public Utility Authority, City of Needles, California, will come to order. Councilmember Pogue will be participating via teams from Hilton Home Suites in Pensacola, Florida. Call to order.
Yes. Here.
Merritt.
Here.
And.
Here.
Pogue.
Here.
Phil.
Here.
Long break.
Here.
Thank you.
Recesa's the city council meeting convened joint council NPUA meeting. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute to, minute time limit per person has been established. Recesa's to executive session.
And those items, Mayor, those items will be uh item A, which we're actually going to cover at the end of the closed session, which is public employee discipline dismissal release pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven. B, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D one. City of Needles versus Manassian. That just involves that one case. Item C is conference with legal counsel regarding potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D four. That's one potential case adverse to Otana Planet Green. Um, and then lastly is a procession item on NPUA council conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two, three, and or four regarding potential litigation with medical investor holdings, N C A management, three two four seven A M L L C, and twenty-one oh three D L L C. And this matter, we have a, we have a couple people that have declared a conflict of interest, and that's Ellen Campbell and council member Pogue, and the reason for their conflict is their sons work at M I H, and for that reason, they will not participate in the closed session on that item. And that's everything for closed session.